Other discussion.
No.
All in favor say aye.
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 All right, Nancy, let me know when we're back up. All right, Bannock County Commissioners are back. We're just exiting the executive session and ready to talk about the B budget and finalize some other discussions on the budget. So with that, where do you want to start? Do you have a preference?
Let's just start with.
The contributions.
Contributions.
Okay.
I'd say.
What page is that on?
So, the first portion is on county operations, page 10. These are going to be split between county operations and indigent. And then, we have a couple other, like the historical, which is in its own fund, veterans, which is in its own fund as well, so. Page 10, if you go to about the middle of the page.
Yep.
We can start with, if you want to start with Lava Memorial, Veterans Memorial, that's 590-901.
Actually, before we do that, historically, we have paid or given about half a million dollars a year, paid. I was looking back over the years, 2023 was 532,000, 2024, 524,000, 2025, 527,000-ish. The clerk, Jason, had some conversations with some of the other counties out there. What did you find out from what you had with that?
Well, in just the conversations that I had, I didn't put it out to every county, but just in passing conversations, I asked other counties what they pay in charitable contributions to these same types of entities in their communities. And where we might pay $20,000 for some great cause, and that's the thing, is we all agree that they are great causes, but we might pay $20,000 to a senior center or something like that, and other counties will pay $1,000 or $2,500. And so, we are really, really at a higher level than most counties are. There are a lot of counties that don't do any charitable contributions, other than what is mandated, like to the Veterans Memorial or something like that. So, it's kind of a hard pill for us to swallow both ways, because they're all good entities. And they're all doing wonderful work in the community. But, we're talking about tax dollars, and we're talking about half a million dollars in tax dollars to mostly private entities, if you want to think about it that way, so.
Okay.
I've visited with a few counties myself.
Have you?
It's like Jefferson County, they give less than $30,000. And I've talked to commissioners and said, no, they don't give to nonprofits. I mean, they just, it is, like you said, county dollars. And I think that this year, we're at a point where we're not able to give a cola to our employees. So, why are we giving to everybody else? I think we are number one, we had President Wagner here, and we had the fire chief here last week, and both of them said their number one entity or people was their number one thing that they need to take care of, their employees. And that's where I think that as we make decisions, right now, my priority is our employees.
Okay. All right, so, anything you want to add to that?
Not yet.
Okay. All right, so let's go to page 10, and we'll just start with Lava Hot Springs Veterans Memorial. 1,200 bucks.
That's nothing. I'm sorry. $1,200 for what we give there, from what we give to everybody else, I think that that's good for that end of our county. Support the veterans and support the veterans.
Okay. I don't have a problem with that.
Good.
Downey American Legion? Same.
Same.
Okay. Lava Senior Citizen Center, 17,000. Now, with that, that's an interesting discussion, because they're doing the Meals on Wheels in the south end of the valley, which I think is a very valuable service. They're trying, again, with their presentation, they're trying to expand down into the Downey area, after the Downey Senior Citizen Center closed. And I think the Meals on Wheels is a valuable program, not just to a small area, but to a broader area.
They go into McCammon.
Yeah, they go to McCammon now, and so, they're looking to go the other direction, so.
Well, their efficiency.
Correct.
Their cost per meal.
Yeah.
Was less than half what our other one is.
And I can tell you by personal experience, the people they're serving need it, because they don't cook right like they should, so they.
And sometimes that's only.
They would take a couple meals a week and actually make it last like four meals or whatever, so it really does help a lot of our taxpayers down there, so.
The other thing about that one, that I appreciate, when they've come to talk to us, there's also, we can create a direct tie from the tax dollar to the product that is being given. It's not just, we are giving, helping get meals into homes for people that would otherwise be lacking. And there is a very direct line from the tax dollar to that plate, which I really appreciate, which is why we increased it just a little bit, so they can expand into Downey.
Is also contact in that home.
Yeah.
If something is going wrong, I mean, that's what, I agree with you, it's a service that I would not want to reduce.
Okay, so I think we're all in unison there, that stays. Pocatello Senior Citizen Center, right now, they're asking for 20. I would be willing to cut that down a little bit, almost in half.
And I have no problem cutting that in half, and one is because in their financials, they have a pretty good savings.
They do.
And support from the city of Pocatello as well.
Correct.
So 10K?
10K. Next is Pocatello Bus Support, or Telo Bus Support, for 10,300. I struggle with that one, I can really go either way, because again, that does serve the whole county.
Not, just because they serve the whole county, I'm okay with them staying where they're at. I mean, $10,000 basically. But, just getting people moving back and forth from the other, I mean, if it was just local. And then the other part that we talked about a little bit with President Wagner is having ISU and having transit, having local transit that helps, and so, I'm okay with leaving that one.
Okay, so that will stay. Next was Economic Development, Bannock Development Corporation, their request was for 70, the clerk put in 20, so let's hear that.
So, for me, that one is this. Every time we talk to Bannock Development, and we ask them, okay, who are you talking to, who have you brought in, it's always a, well, we have a nondisclosure agreement, we can't talk about it. And I say that if we are giving tax dollars to an entity, then I don't care about your nondisclosures. And, they have never once, in the seven years I've been here, said, we directly were the ones that made the contact and brought this business here. I'm all for business, I want growth, I want smart growth, but never, not one time, have they ever said, we used your tax dollars to bring this entity here. And so therefore, I don't feel good about giving that number in tax dollars to an entity that always just says, sorry, we can't tell you. Tell me a business that they've brought in, that they are the ones that brought it.
Morton. That's the first one that comes to mind, I'll stop ahead.
They have never come to the Commissioners' meetings and said, we directly brought this business here. And I'm all about economic development, but I think that is a huge chunk of money to just throw out there, with very little result.
Okay. I'm going to disagree, because again, I'm pro-economic development, and I have some frustrations like you've talked about, so I, and I think if we maintain it at 70, we need to set those expectations, that when they do come, that they open that up and talk, because I have frustration that I even sit on the board, so I understand what you're talking about, but I just don't think that now is a good time to cut from that, because we need to grow economically here, and so that'd be my case for leaving him, so.
And I'm kind of in the middle here. I don't, I think 20 is too low, but I'm not sure that 70 is where it needs to be either.
Ken, to you then.
I remember when I was 90, and we cut them to 70. For a lot of the same thing, is it, the rhetoric that we just kept getting the same pitch all the time with a different director, but we just never ever saw any results, and part of our problem of it is, we were competing against Eastern Idaho, which Idaho Falls was trying to get us to subscribe to theirs, which I wasn't, I didn't like that either. I would like to see them with some expectations out there, because I do agree that it's a tough job, I don't know how they do it, because they've got headhunters all over the place, going to every county, every city. I don't think we always need to give up things to get people here, we have a wonderful community here, but it's going to take the right thing. So, I'm probably, if I left it at 70, it would be with some expectations. If it was lower than that, I don't want to cripple that organization either, because I do know we're one of the major, us and Pocatello are probably the two major contributors there, but.
My thoughts 50, honestly. Like I said, I'm looking at what we need to gain to get the wages to our employees, and so, that's one of the areas to me.
I'm going to still fight for 70, but I'd take 60, how's that? See where you're at.
All right, we'll go to 60.
You're okay with 60?
We're going up a little bit, but I think there should be some expectations on there. I agree with Jason, that I never ever got to see there were some promises of that refrigeration unit that was supposed to come in out there, that never did.
Well, they're the ones that went, and actually, and I was with them, researched them and found out that is a bad deal, and so.
And I was kind of glad it didn't, because it didn't smell good for me. When I, pardon the refrigeration thing, but, and I knew though, they brought Morton in, but now we're losing Peterson out there. Is that the best?
Well, that's part of my complaint, is that that's not in Bannock County.
No.
I mean, I know, that is, but that's not in Bannock County. And, so, Power County, are you throwing in $20,000, because we keep throwing money your direction, you know? And so, I really like the 50, honestly, I could have gone in half, and I didn't, so I.
I think I'll go aside with the 50, probably. And say, okay, here's our expectations, maybe if nothing else, it's an attention getter.
Okay.
And, I haven't been a part, I was on that board as well, so I understand the people that are on that board, and so.
Yep.
I'll go with that.
All right, Family Services Alliance for 10. Thoughts on that one?
And we haven't given money there?
We have, so sorry, this is one, if you look on, to the right, this is one we had to move from the indigent fund.
Okay.
Due to funding.
Okay. Makes a difference when I see zero and all of a sudden 10.
Yeah, when you look left.
Across there, okay, read the whole thing.
We did, the clerk's recommendation did reduce it, so it had been 60.
Family Services Alliance had been 60?
Oh, sorry, I was looking at Free Clinic. Sorry, up one.
Yeah.
No, 10. Sorry.
I would propose we cut that in half. I don't know enough about that one. Commissioner Moser?
I'm good with 5.
Okay, I'll concur then.
Okay, 5.
There we go, now we go Free Clinic.
Okay. And that one was 50,000 is what the clerk has recommend?
Yes.
Recommended, reduced to 10,000?
Yeah.
My worry about that is, I think maybe we could get there, but I'm wondering if that drastic of a cut would, without a lot of lead time, would that cripple something they're doing there on that? Because the Free Clinic does, for dental, for health, it serves a lot of people, and they are Bannock County in that, so I don't know whether I would go clear to what.
They just took 10,000 off of it.
It was 60, it's down to 50.
Okay, I'm all good with 50, I thought we was going from 50 to 10, just because if we're cutting one, it's hard to.
Commissioner Moser, on that one?
I'm good with that.
Okay.
Yep.
That one works?
Because they do a lot of wonderful things.
Next one is Meals on Wheels, SECA, 50,000.
Are we duplicating?
I don't know if SECA or Meals on Wheels goes to South County.
No, they don't, they're mostly Pocatello, but what about the senior center? Don't they have meals there?
They do.
But you have to go there to get it?
Yeah, I think that's the biggest difference, Meals on Wheels delivers, the senior center does not.
Okay. And it is a good service, I don't.
I'm actually okay with that again, because I just think we need to try to help take care of that older population.
Well, and somebody gets in that home a couple times a week too, to make a difference to those people.
Commissioner Moser?
I'm good with that.
Okay, that one will stay. Mother Infant Care Program, 50,000 from the indigent budget.
That one was reduced by 5,000, for the clerk's recommendation.
Did they even come in and present? I don't remember that one.
I was allowed to have those meetings.
They was with another group.
Yes.
They came in with the Free Clinic.
Because this is program-specific for.
So are they under anybody else's umbrella? Are they freestanding nonprofit?
If I remember correctly, it's the Free Clinic, but the Free Clinic portion goes to help the self-pay, the level pays, and this is just specific to. Yes.
I don't know enough about that one to.
That one I would be willing to take down a little further, but. Commissioner Moser, thoughts on that one? Because I wonder if the health department.
That's where I was going just now, because the health department does diapers, they do this and they do that, and they do.
So we need to just push more people to the health department, which we already give, how much?
A million dollars.
Yeah.
Million dollars a year.
It's 1.1 million.
Are we duplicating?
I think in that one, we might be a little bit.
What other source of revenue do they have?
Well, it's not a totally Free Clinic, I do think they have Medicaid billing, some other stuff.
Right, but are they on the umbrella of the Free Clinic then?
They came in together, but I can't remember.
But I don't know if they are, are they freestanding their own nonprofit? That's what I.
I don't think so, no.
So, so they're all, so with that, if they already are part of the Free Clinic, I would assume the city of Pocatello has some money in the game there too, I don't know.
Cut it in half.
Let's try that, see if it.
Commissioner Moser?
I'm good.
Okay. Cut that in half.
Get somebody's attention out there, really.
Yeah, we will. Health West, 10,000.
I'm good with that.
Commissioner Moser?
I'm good.
Because they have Lava and also Downey.
Correct.
And that is their, a lot of those people can't travel.
Next is Porton Soil and Water for 15,000. Did we already commit to that one?
I don't think we have committed to that, because they come in and they present and say, it helps us with grant matches, with CCOG and all those guys, so.
I know they do a lot of good things out in the county to help with all of that, but I don't know what other source of funding they get.
The key to this one is, they get a match, for every dollar we give them, they get a dollar, so, I mean, so.
I'm willing to leave that one.
I'm probably okay with that, because they serve the entire county.
Correct.
So, I'm good with that.
CASA donation, 25,000. Remind me about CASA.
This is a court.
For kids.
Court-appointed.
I'm.
And we're on the hook for that on the other side still, with the attorneys appointed.
Yeah. I have a soft spot for CASA, because that's just, they're filling a niche, whether that's too much or not, I don't know, but.
Commissioner Moser?
I'd probably just take it down 5,000, 20,000.
Okay, I'm good with that.
Okay, 20,000. 20,000. Seabed Meals, 4,000. What in the world's that? I don't remember that one either.
Sorry, which one?
Seabed?
Oh, those are the meals we pay for the crisis center.
Oh, the.
Crisis center, okay.
And I don't know how long we're on the hook for that. Court-appointed special advocate.
That's right.
$4,000 is not law.
I know a lot of the people that come in there.
They spend it.
They're hungry, they're in trouble.
Four grand's not that bad, it's no.
I'm good with that.
Okay, what's the next section then?
That'll be in indigent. 55.
I don't know, go from 11 to 55.
I don't know, but the page number being giant sure is nice.
Is that wonderful?
All right, so, Mental Transports, that's not a.
Need to jump to.
Community Guardians. Community Guardians, Ernie, you want to speak to that one?
And that's, that's just basically a pace for their lunches, and Ken's doing that now.
And they.
But, that one, these guys volunteer and go out to indigent people, $2,500.
I'm not.
I wouldn't take it away from them.
And it's not just indigent, it's people that have no other resource.
Yeah.
And they're court, they're court-appointed, so actually, we're the recipient of those people.
Those people are volunteers.
They're on Guardians.
Every hour, volunteer.
I'm okay with that one.
Yep, I knew that was the case, I just wanted to give you a chance to say that one on the record. Bright Tomorrows for 11, 5.
And this is another one that's very dear to my heart, I mean, the work that they do with those that have been abused and neglected, these are kids.
Okay.
Okay, I'm good.
Yep. Aid for Friends, I'll move to strike that one. Not a fan.
Do I have a consensus?
Okay.
Commissioner Boyd?
You know, I don't know enough about them anymore, especially since they've got that building down there now, have they got more funding for that? They're in that old city of Pocatello building, they got a lot better.
It's a great building.
It's a great building, and I don't know where, what other resources they have, I'm kind of weak on that anymore, because I don't understand what they've got. I would assume city of Pocatello's on the hook for some of that too, I would imagine. They give them the building, but I don't know whether they give them.
Did they give them the building, because they sold the building we had.
Well, the one they.
Had to purchase it.
I.
I thought they had to purchase it too.
They may have, and, but they're in the old city of Pocatello, which building, so they've had the building now, and I don't know whether, I just don't know enough about that too.
Well, my other reason for that is, again, it doesn't necessarily serve the whole county, it's more, it's for friends for the homeless population.
And the transients.
And the transients here in Pocatello.
And it's like, say, I follow your logic, of the county dollars to county residents, and a lot of them people are here today, gone next week, to somewhere else maybe. We're serving the people that come here, don't have a bed.
From Texas.
And don't have a plan.
From Texas, we heard, and Washington.
Yeah. It's the same thing as that other one, that, you remember come, the old converted gym over there?
Yeah.
Across there, they were looking, are we giving them any money? To put up transients? So.
So 30,000 to zero, or?
Zero.
Okay.
I guess we'll get their attention, won't we?
Okay, that's all three then. Next.
I don't want to cripple anybody.
That's it on this one, the only other areas to talk would be historical. Do you want to keep with the clerk's recommendation, which was the same as this year?
Historical Society?
Yes, that's on page 53.
Oh, and she came spoke to us this morning, right?
Yep.
Now, one I struggle with.
And they want, now, their original request was 61% dollar, 61% dollar. Clerk's recommendation keeps it consistent with what they've been getting, the ask today was an additional swap.
53. And there's no statutory obligation for that, right?
No, no, there is.
You just have the living capacity for it, right?
And it's one of them deals that I, it's kind of like the memorial building, you have the ability to generate some funds. So, generate some funds, if you really want to improve and grow. I mean, we just invested a lot of money in that, we just put a new roof in, we just, they had the water damage, I mean, we've invested a lot there in the last couple of years.
And that's, this historical doesn't even, it doesn't reflect the shelving that we've helped them purchase, we've used some out of their budget, we've also used some out of the county centennial trust.
So where are they physically located?
Up there at the old Port Hall replica.
Oh, that one there?
Yep.
What are we doing with the one in Lava?
Well, that's part of this discussion.
Right here too.
Because we give them 12,000.
Yeah. See, in Lava, I think he could change his prices and offset whatever we do here, and I would, I was going to propose we cut Lava in half, just have him change his pricing.
So I hate to throw this on the city of Pocatello on the record, but if the city of Pocatello is only helping them with the building, but receiving 20% of proceeds, maybe
Are they receiving, are they receiving the proceeds?
Isn't that what he said this morning?
I missed that.
I thought they said they only give 60% because.
Maybe he's proposing to change it to the 20.
No, because on his sheet, he shows a part coming back to them than the rest.
Yeah, and that's what I was trying, I was trying to do some calculation, one of them was 60%, the other one was 70%.
And I think he pitched, I mean, I didn't look at the paperwork, Jason put it, so I hope that I didn't. Yeah, and that's where he felt comfortable keeping it, but if, and Pocatello is helping with the building, but honestly, we're helping with the building as well, so.
I bet we put more into the building than they have with all the repairs and things that we've done the last couple of years.
Well, I think he said they specifically work on the replica, not the museum.
Right, yeah, they don't, and we've done, like you guys said, we've done some building repairs, the roof on top of, the shelving we've put in, I think the shelving was 24,000, is that some right? And we've done that at least twice, so.
Well, I can throw it out, we cut Lava in half, and I'll take a suggestion on Historical Society.
Well, I'd cut them at least in.
Maybe proportionately.
I think they've got to have a better plan. I mean, I've asked at least twice for some financials, and they act like, well, we don't know what to give you. We'll start with your revenues and your expenses, show us where the money's being spent, and they, they're getting rid of their director, which scares me a little bit, they're being run by a bunch of old historical people, which are probably volunteering.
Well, it's one of them deals that we don't own the facility.
Or control it.
And then, the board controls it, we don't control anything on the board, but they want our money, and I just, I'm still saying our employees, we got to find the funds for our employees.
So throw something out. What did you?
10,000 off.
So take them from their request, or last year from.
Take them from 93 to 83.
And that's still quite a bit, but it's also one of them deals that, we'll see what happens in a year. And that's still quite a bit, but it's also one of them deals that, we'll see what happens in a year.
I wouldn't have a problem even pulling it seventy-five.
Seventy-five, why you're sixty, sixty-five.
Where's your gavel, where's your gavel?
Wait, you're going backwards.
I mean, it's, it's still, we're, we're trying to.
Seventy-five.
Yeah, we're trying to put a Band-Aid when a tourniquet maybe need to, something needs to happen there. Either they've got to find some more funding, they've got to do something different with the City of Pocatello. It just seems like they're adrift.
Okay, seventy-five, sold.
Uh, Veterans is on page sixty-seven.
There's a different discussion.
Sixty-seven.
So within the clerk's recommendation, it was only cut about twenty-nine hundred dollars.
Fifty?
Sixty-seven.
Sixty-seven. Um, and that was reduced in the repair and maintenance for the buildings. And.
I think Commissioner Moser has a good proposal on that.
And I, I say twenty-five thousand, and we give them a check at the beginning of, you know, budget. And we don't pay any of their bills for them, they take care of business, but we give them twenty-five thousand dollars that they can utilize for the facility.
Because currently, we've been giving them money for water and power, correct?
Current, well.
Paying their utilities?
Historically, we used to give them money. Ran into some problems that they potentially weren't spending the money where it could or should have been spent. There was questions. So we took over and they would submit us invoices and we paid the bills directly. And that's.
Which scares me.
Where we are right now. But at least then, um, we knew the money was being spent on the building and not anything else. Because statutorily, we can only spend money on the building. So if they wanted to buy a can opener for the kitchen, it did not work unless it was adhered to the counter, or the countertop. Yeah.
And I'm, I'm at the point where we shouldn't have to babysit them. We give them the funds and they are obligated to spend them where they're supposed to be spent.
Don't we do that with everyone else?
Yeah, that's how we treat.
We just hand the historical, the Lava, Veterans, the money, it's theirs.
A little bit of difference is where the money is funded. This is funded specifically out of Veterans Memorial, which limits that they have to spend the money on the building. So you could change it, do the twenty-five thousand, but then ask for an accounting of it. Based on history, we would probably be able to figure out that between heat, water, utilities, and liability insurance, that's going to be the twenty-five. So, should be an easy, but just goes back to the accountability.
I don't know why we're having to pay the liability insurance. It's not our building.
Well.
I mean, our names are not on the title anywhere. So, you give them twenty-five thousand dollars and they can utilize it on the building.
Twenty-five thousand on the table, Commissioner Bullard, to you. You going to hold them, you going to fold them?
I don't have any other reason not to, if, if we're kind of cutting down on other places, I don't have a problem doing that same thing. Because I, again, I, they're just, they're not being responsible, uh, they're floating. I don't even know if they have a direction. They have the access to be able to fund themselves with donations of people who are veterans or are interested. There's people out there with money that we wouldn't have to take taxpayers' dollars to support if they would do their own campaigns, which they're capable of doing.
And they're in the middle of that, so.
So.
Alright, twenty-five thousand, everybody in favor of that one?
Yep.
Okay.
For the hundred and nine thousand savings. With.
Is there any other things to go?
Thirty-seven to go.
Is there any other donations to go to, or is that it?
I'm trying to think. I mean, we have, there's nothing that's going to be ongoing, we could cut litigation fund, those are reserves. We could cut, um, anything else we cut, I think, would be, unless we look at department budgets, which we could look at. Ooh, I have ten thousand dollars in cell phone savings.
Look at that.
Actually ninety-five hundred, but, there's ninety-five hundred.
Alright.
Um, we could look operationally, there might be some extra areas in department, um, fuel? Because they tend to budget a little high sometimes. We did already take down Roden Bridge about fifty thousand under clerk's recommendation. We could look at the share of fuel, um, and see what that's at.
I want to bring something up before we do that, Ken. Uh, we had the presentation from the Kids Alliance, twenty-five thousand was the request to fund the Tri-Share program. Which I, I was at the meeting on Friday, McCammon, Ponyta, Mayor Hall brought a check to put in to, to help fund one child through that program. So, I would like to, again, put forth the request to the board that we fund it for one year and see what it looks like as we try a trial program. And this is a public-private partnership to help solve some of the workforce issues. To either keep people working and not taking, taking themselves out of the workforce due to daycare issues or childcare issues. And it's that partnership, and once the money's gone, then it's gone. And we may or may not even use it, but at this point in time, businesses are waiting to see if we're going to move, we're waiting to see if the businesses are going to move. Uh, the businesses, we've had Farm Bureau and a couple of other large employers, Simplot, are very interested in the program. So, that would be my request to the board is that we look at that discussion.
And I, honestly, I think that we could even use one-time monies for one, for this, to, to kick it off the ground. And then, next year, we'd see what was going on, but, but it's one of them deals that to get people in the workforce, it, it's been a problem since COVID. And so I, I think that it's one of them deals that this is where we step forward. If we're taking money away from, uh, Bannick Development, well, this is our opportunity to say Bannick County's willing to do this. If we're taking money here, we're going to put it right here, and we're going to try to benefit our, our employees and employers in this way. That's, that's kind of the way I feel about it.
Commissioner Bullard?
What I'd like to do is tie it to Bannick County. How many employers, how many employees will benefit from this inside their own organization?
This, that amount of money, based on the averages, will fund eight children for one year. That would be our third for a year.
So theoretically, we could very easily justify eight children of Bannick County employees.
Except that it'd be doubling because.
Right, but I mean, uh, it, it is a program that would help us internally as well. All our employees, maybe we could keep them, maybe we could do that instead of having to give them a raise to support child support. I mean, I'm sympathetic when almost requires two incomes now to even buy a house and, and the childcare is an issue. So, in my rationale, uh, if twenty-five thousand is kind of the thing that would maybe support eight children, we could very easily look at how many employees, we have two hundred employees?
Four hundred.
Four hundred, you could easily say, we're benefiting Bannick County's employees by helping support this other program. So, I don't have a problem with that, under that kind of logic. Because it is a, it is a something, and that way, we at least know where that money's going, or where it should be going. We don't know what's going on with history.
But Bannick County's share would be fifty thousand to cover them eight employees.
If we could cover.
If, if we did that.
Two parts of it, or if we open it up.
The requirement for the program is you have to meet certain income requirements, so some of Bannick County's may not.
Right.
So, and again, it's up to the employer who can participate, who can't, as long as they meet the threshold. So.
So the employee, does the employees have any skin in the game?
Yes, they're.
So that's part of the.
They're paying their rent.
So that's part of their partnership, so again, we're benefiting our own employees. It's almost like giving them a raise to those that, you know, uh, if there is a program that helps them with their childcare. So, I'm okay with that, under that kind of logic.
Okay.
So how much?
Twenty-five.
At least we have a measurable, uh, that we can see where it goes.
And I think Ernie's right, if we did the, the one-time funds, that would fit, because it is not a ongoing program, it isn't as funded.
Yep.
Okay.
Well, we could probably even pay it this year.
Yeah, if there is some this year, uh, in some leftover funds.
Potential litigation, you've got grant match money that we could use if you wanted to pay it this year.
Okay, let's do that, not free up budget money for next year or something, okay?
Okay.
So we didn't take a, a hit there. We're still, how much do we need to fight?
Have them, real quick, back on this one, um, just have them send us an invoice.
Okay.
And we can get that paid out of this year's budget, and then we're not adding it to next year's, correct?
Correct.
Great.
So I am correct. Wiping that out.
Okay.
Are you still looking for a hundred and something thousand?
No.
No.
We have, if we use the one oh nine, and we use my ninety-five hundred for Verizon, we only need thirty-seven five.
Which we have in some contingency funds in the county, but.
These are ongoing dollars that we should be trying to find. So in theory, we should try to find some ongoing costs where people may be budgeted flush, fluff.
On our last fuel thing, when does that expire? Will it go through the whole budget year?
Yeah.
Because we locked in our fuel price with that, correct?
I believe it's for the full year.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I did, so, when we get to this point in the clerk's recommendation, I tend to look at the big departments. Um, there's potentially twenty thousand we could take out of Roden Bridge, um, operating supplies roads. And that's as far as I.
What is that?
It's where they pay for. Write it real quick, um, it's at three hundred thousand. In twenty-three, they spent two hundred and eighty-seven, and in twenty-four, they spent two hundred and thirty-two. Um, it's where they're going to pay for just, I don't think they pay for the chip sale and stuff like that. Nope, they pay for, no, because that's down below. That's in Roden, so they've got road oil, um, that might be the chip oil or chip sale stuff, but I think. Honestly, nope, striping's contract, flagging's contract, but I think honestly, we could take twenty out of that pretty easy. Um, and then I can see if I can find twenty thousand in the sheriff or jail.
Yes.
Yeah, because we spend a lot of money out in those areas.
Well, and we've been very generous.
Right.
I mean, and, and the truth of the matter is, like I said, we're talking about building new buildings out there for Roden Bridge, for Coroner and stuff. I mean, so. People need to, to realize, when it comes down to this crunch time, they're part of the crunch.
Okay.
Now. I could probably get the other twenty out of fuel for patrol. Sheriff's budget.
And what's the historical number on that?
So they asked for two hundred and four, they spent a hundred and fifty-three in twenty-three, and they spent a hundred and seventy-one in twenty-four. But traditionally, when Teresa calculates this, she takes the number of miles times the rate that Roden Bridge gives them, which is probably a higher-than-expected rate, and just.
To be on the safe side.
So if we took this to one eighty-two, that's still eighteen thousand more than they spent in twenty-four.
I'm willing to do that. Because we're not adding any deputies, so we shouldn't have any additional mileage that way.
And their vehicles are already added in.
Even if we didn't take it down that far, then we're just going to start to look for smaller dollars, like here and there.
They're not going to have.
So even if we took it to one eighty-five.
I'm okay with that.
Instead of the one eighty-two, and then we're just, if we took it to one eighty-five, what would we be looking for then? What's that math?
Five. Oh wait, no, one eighty-five, that's nineteen, a thousand dollars. And honestly, they can look that up, bottom line.
Yeah.
Okay.
The other thing is I could take twenty, or maybe ten from here, and then I'll find another ten thousand. You know what, let's do this. Education, let's take the one thirty-four, two fifty, that's taking ten thousand away, and ten thousand from fuel. That's a twenty thousand. Page thirty-three.
Yeah. Just bring us back a couple of scenarios like that, I'd say, I mean.
What do you think about fifteen in fuel and then just five in the education? Because I think education is important. Wherever you go, whatever you do, you bring something back.
Well, their education, to put it in perspective, they were at one twenty-five, they took it to one forty-four.
Oh.
Now granted, that is sheriff and jail.
And jail.
So that is a lot of employees, and.
It's half of our employees.
It covers post, it covers being able to train in-house, it, it does cover a lot.
They're doing a lot more in-house training though.
But they've got to get certified to do the in-house training, so that, that's another reason it's so high, but.
I'm okay with that though, cut that back a little bit.
So do ten out of each, or do five out of education and fifteen out of fuel?
Do five and fifteen to start.
Okay.
Like Jason says, education, we've, we've pushed that, we've pushed training.
True.
And we don't want to just start hacking away at it after we tell them to do it.
Good grief.
I know it. Okay. So in theory, this should be balanced with the ads and salaries and the reductions in operating. Um, we can go back, put all these in, and bring you final numbers. Do you want to do a regroup tomorrow after, I can email them to you, and you come up to them.
Well, I can get on the phone.
Okay.
Or. We got our regular meeting.
Right, and I think.
Why don't you, can you do it during our regular business meetings? Not on agenda, but could you?
We're scheduled for budget tomorrow.
Okay, so you're on there, so I'll just.
What time is it?
At nine o'clock, I'll be on the phone.
I think we're scheduled at ten.
I think we're scheduled at ten tomorrow.
We are at ten.
I think that's what.
So do you want to call in at ten?
Or. We'll just, we'll just call you at ten.
Yeah, you guys will call me, but I'll just need to know, because I have to be where there's.
Just plan on, just plan on us calling you at ten. Unless we send you an email or something, otherwise plan on.
And that way, I can, I probably won't have anything new, but I'd like to at least know what's going on.
When you go downstairs, just double-check with Chrissy what time it is.
I, yeah, and I talked with, she will make sure, Jeff will just have to call me.
Yeah, but if we do that, and then if everything does balance, and my math is.
Okay.
Okay, based on our work.
If, if it doesn't balance, if we're off a thousand dollars here or there, we're probably okay to just, to just go ahead and take a number here and there from those different lines to balance it.
Between now and the official budget hearing anyway.
Well, if, if this is balanced and you get, oh, we need to talk about Pilt, sorry. So Pilt, if you look at the funding sheet that I gave you, um, we're only using two hundred thousand dollars roll forward for Scott to keep him, hopefully to do some projects if he needs to. Would you be, which, that's going to leave about three hundred thousand, usually a budget five hundred thousand in revenue. If we only spend two hundred, that's building reserves by three hundred thousand. Part of the other purpose of that, it's page seventy, part of the other purpose of that is, um, Dan has enough other projects going, and we can use Dan's reserve balances that have been built up in certain funds. So this money could just not be spent next year, other than this little bit, and then we could gang up again on Pilt monies in twenty-seven. But, the thought was with the YDC, the jail boilers, which shouldn't be over budget or have any problems, the other project that's not going to be done is the intercoms at the jail, shouldn't again have any problems there, but I didn't know, maybe we should just throw in a hundred thousand for the ARPA overages again.
Yes.
If it's not used, it can just roll forward.
Yes.
Okay.
And I'll open the budget up to just put it in there later.
And you're not, you're not going to get that remodeling out at the Roden Bridge done in a year anyway. So some of that's going to be a two-year project.
Okay, so I'll throw a hundred thousand in there.
Unless I'm missing, that thing's not going to get designed and done.
It's going to be in stages.
It's going to be a two-year project, and so.
Now, are you going to fight your mark that as ARPA overages, or do you just want to put it in their building projects?
Just building projects.
Yeah.
And we got our chambers, we got a few other things, so. Who knows?
Mm-hmm.
And then, just like you said, furniture, we're not positive about all that.
Whatever we end up doing in here, once we move the commission chambers down and remodel this into a training area for HR.
That should still roll two hundred thousand of unused monies, because we should receive more than, um.
So, I'd like to have a real quick discussion before we totally wrap up. We, I, we've talked a lot about doing some things to rehab the fields up at the event center and the wellness complex. We, I, we've talked a lot about doing some things to rehab the fields up at the event center and the wellness complex. And the, the general thought that we've had a couple of times is do we take the, the existing football fields offline for a year and put in some new fields down, uh, at the lower spot down by the, uh, over, the covered arena.
Right.
So we can rehab that. Is that a project we would like to entertain for next year if we have some additional revenue coming in or some reserves to look at doing something like that? Because that problem's not going away anytime soon.
It's only growing.
You hear about it all the time from the soccer people and the football people.
So I, you know, I live right there. I live, I live a few blocks away. I am at the wellness complex probably six days a week for either soccer practice or for my own enjoyment with my family. I am there almost every day. And there are thousands and thousands of people that use that every single day. So I was talking with Scott, uh, just at the, at the concert the other night about his stresses with the people that are using those fields, the complaints that come in. And part of it, it's, those fields have never looked better. I've been playing on those Bannock fields since I was in junior high when they first made those fields. And they have never looked better than they've looked this year. Over on the wellness complex side, it's finally starting to fill in. It's finally getting it. Just in time for football feeling, season. If we did have, uh, so, uh, last year, we went and played in a soccer tournament, um, down in Utah. And we asked them, how do you keep these fields so nice? And that city, it's a city that does it, but they alternate the contracts between fields. So we would let them play Friday Night Lights on the field, these wellness complex fields one year and the lower fields another year. And, cause football kills fields. And, um, so it is a highly, highly used area. I, I would venture to say that it is the most used park anywhere in the county and not even close. I think it's money well spent. But we also have, before, before we expand, do we fix some of the problems that we have with the weed? Look, we talked about it this morning, fixing some of the weeds and the fences and things like that. It's difficult. But I think that that, if we put in that nine acres of fields and fenced it, I think the bid was right around 400,000 dollars, right?
We have water.
Well, that, that would.
That's an issue we'd have to.
Yeah, that, that would be the issue that we would have to find out is if we could get water down there or cycle it a little bit.
And no, I don't remember how much the bid was.
It was, it was, it was 375-ish. So. Yeah, it's about 400,000 to put in that nine acres of fields. It's a, it's a great, and, and that's where my heart is with all those sports. And there's just, it used to be Cotent Park, but now it's all baseball. It's only baseball. And so there really is nowhere in the county.
It is filled with little kids.
It's little kids and it's baseball and softball. So there is nowhere else for the thousands and thousands of kids that are playing soccer and football. There's nowhere else for them to go.
Say, Yonkewar, that's, they have lacrosse there.
They do.
That's as, as busy as a field that there is too, but it doesn't have, of course, it has the Brooklyn playground.
Right.
And it gets used. It's amazing to me how many people that are moving into these apartments and they're using our wellness center and our parks for their recreation. And that, it's only going to get worse, I think.
So if we have reserves or PIL, then I would put it in the budget. And then let's have a conversation. Let's have a sit down and, or even a field trip. And, and say, this is our goal. So that's what I'd say. Let's, let's put it in the budget. And then let's make our plan.
And take a year to do it. Cause I think you want to do this right. With all the other stuff we have going.
There's a lot, there's a lot of projects and so.
Just like Jason just said. And, and maybe, uh, Dylan had told Scott that they used to have a guy that they hired to come and spray weeds and do all that stuff. So maybe, you know, at least let's go have a, a field trip and let's, let's talk about it. And how much do you all put in there?
So do you want to do the 400? I mean, my, my proposal would be let's put it in PIL. Because if I'm planning on getting 500,000 in revenues, that would put this budget at 800. We would only be dipping in reserves by 300. And we have over a million in reserves there, partially because we got the big LETCM funds. And that was a million dollars.
Yeah, let's, let's do that.
And worst case, the bid came in at 370.
500 so we can take care of some fencing because I would, I would like to take care of, uh, that parking area.
The barbed wire fence areas?
Chubbik Road.
It looks horrible.
So when we put it in here, what if, we'll, we'll put it in the event center wellness complex and then we'll just put it in, let's just do operating. And then, um, well, on the comments, we'll put fencing and new field.
Okay.
Would that work?
Or at least design of it. Whether we get it done, you can at least start the design work and that work.
Per Commissioner's approval. This money doesn't get spent without Commissioner's approval.
Well, because there's no specific project, usually with PIL, we do make them come talk to you about it.
Well, I like your note of new fields and fencing.
And if it's, because if it's anything different, then he would have to come talk to you. But something like this, it'd be new enough. Even on his 200, I think if he has a use for it, he'll come talk to you about what we're going to spend it on.
Correct.
Okay. Last thing is, uh, Roden Bridge supplementing the purchase of that Tahoe. So right now we have budgeted to use reserves to purchase that Tahoe and it'll be general fund reserves. If you have Roden Bridge supplement the purchase, it's just going to be less Roden Bridge, or general fund reserves and be paid by Roden Bridge reserves. We can do that or it's going to wash ultimately anyways.
No, the, the law will say favor this way.
That works.
I mean, he picked up what, the 2,500 dollars the other day?
Yeah.
He was having that discussion.
Yeah.
We're reminding.
Yeah, just.
We just did 70,000 dollars.
Just depends on who brings donuts.
It's probably going to be about 30, 40,000 dollars worth there, if not more. Okay, I think, do you have anything that we missed? And then I can go ahead and make these minor, these are pretty piddly changes. Jason's like, really, is that worth it? But it added up.
Well, let's do it right.
I'll make a few of those adjustments. And then, um, okay. So tomorrow we'll have a.
So are you happy?
I am happy, yeah.
Do you?
Everybody at least happy? Nancy, over what we've done?
Nancy gave us thumbs up.
I mean, because of the work the departments have done and everybody else, I really think this was just tweaking. We didn't really. I mean, I could see a lot worse from what we've done.
Chris has got the eye twitch going.
Well, there was one other thing that was brought up by one of the departments in executive session for longevity for employees that are not receiving anything. Do you want, those would be one-time monies?
That's one-time money.
Do you want to look at anything for that?
I think we should.
Are you going to do it in this year's budget? In this year's expenditures before we move into it, if we have it?
No, it would be 26. Everybody got a 3% this year.
Okay.
I thought there were some, there were 40-some one that did not.
That number will be reduced by at least one that I know of. So, but about 40 people, yes.
Yeah, so those 40 should get some sort of longevity.
If they're at, at max.
Market, yeah.
At market. And can we take that out of this year or does it have to come out of next year? Like if we've got the cash.
We'll just, if, we'll just use reserves for next year.
Just be one-time money.
Yeah, it's one-time money.
Yeah. You just got to tell me the dollar amount.
What would be a good number? What do you think is a good number?
If you're going to do it, you got to make it worth it. I think it's at least 500 bucks.
I don't know. I was just thinking 40,000.
I was thinking of 1,000.
And that'd be a thousand dollars. I mean.
Is that really?
We could look.
That is enough that it makes people know that it's a, it's a bonus.
Let me give you the lowest amount that anybody is getting. How's that? So I have one employee. Oh, she's part-time, that's why. Um, she's only getting 500 dollars, but she's part-time. Full timers, I've got 13, wow. She's full-time. So the lowest pay raise somebody is getting is 998 dollars. So a thousand bucks would be right in there.
Thousand. Okay. So you put 40,000 dollars into it.
Of one-time money.
Make it work.
And then we can pay that one time or we can give two checks. The benefit of two checks is if somebody leaves in December and we've already given them a thousand, they got a bonus. I don't care how we do it, just throwing out options. We can decide that at a later date as well.
It's a nice Christmas bonus. So.
Yeah, I'd do it in two checks.
Okay.
I mean, I just.
Do you care?
No. It'll be a upload. 500 bucks around Thanksgiving time and 500 bucks like in May, maybe.
Beginning of school.
Okay. All right. Any other discussion?
Thank you all.
I, again, would like to echo both of them and say thank you. It's been a very good budget session this year. Lot of good discussion, lot of good back and forth. Well done.